Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the April 6th, 2021 Pulse Falls City Council meeting. We'll note that all council members are present. And we did start the evening with a workshop on some of the developments taking place in Pulse Falls this year and last year. I would note that we originally had two public hearings on the agenda and the public hearing on impact fees has been removed. The agenda has been adjusted accordingly, so we do not need a motion to amend, correct? We do have a proclamation tonight, today. Whereas, this is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Pulse Falls Communication Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, public safety telecommunications at the Pulse Falls Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited a compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job for the past year. Now therefore, I Ronald G. Jacobson, Mayor of the City of Pulse Falls, do hereby proclaim April 11th through 17th, 2021 to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Pulse Falls. To recognize and honor the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our citizens and emergency responders safe. Dated today, 2021. Thank you very much to our PD and our EMS and the whole telecommun- telecommunicator group. Couple announcements, the city is hosting the annual tree giveaway this year as a drive-through style event. Residents must register in advance for their trees, tree species and pickup times. Pickup dates are April 8th and 9th, and the 12th and the 14th. There is a limit to three trees per household. You can register online at postfallsidaho.org. It's important to note that you need to register because in the past, people start lining up at four, five in the morning and loop all the way through the park several times and then up Spokane Street. And I've got a feeling the PD's not going to allow cars to do the same. So please register for your trees and for your time. Second Harvest is hosting a mobile food market this Friday, April 9th, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Pulse Falls Library. They are offering free produce, meat, and other nutritious products for anyone in need while supplies last. And we have some awards to give out tonight, lifesaving and distinguished service awards presented by the Police Department Chief.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, Pat Knight, Chief of Police. And very fitting that we have the proclamation week being announced tonight because we have a stack of awards tonight. Seven of those will be for our dispatchers on a job well done. We just want to take a minute this evening, I know there's 11 awards to give out, but I promise you, we will not take your time up. This is all over one incident, one critical incident that we had here in Pulse Falls. But we want to take some time this evening to just recognize some great work done by the staff involved, so. Without further ado, I will pay assisted as usual by Captain Mueller and Lieutenant Brannall here. But I'll just read kind of in order with the event that we have here. By order, the Chief of Police on this date, ECO Supervisor Lori Flood is hereby awarded the distinguished service award. On February 20th, 2013, the City of Pulse Falls Police Department established the distinguished service award. The distinguished service award is presented to the department members who display exceptional devotion to duty under adverse conditions or demonstrate special faithfulness or perseverance in police service. On December 18th, 2020, at approximately 1931 hours, Pulse Falls Police ECO Supervisor Flood answered a 911 call. On the other end of the line was a frantic female reporting activities she believed to be suspicious. The reporting party stated that two men had been walking toward her. She heard a pop noise and then both men ran in opposite directions. The reporting party also told Supervisor Flood that there was a vehicle parked on Charleville that was involved and approached the vehicle. Reporting, there was one occupant who was not moving and appeared to be deceased. ECO Supervisor Flood was able to get the reporting party to calm down and direct the caller in a clear and concise manner. While ECO Supervisor Flood was talking, I'm sorry, was taking the call, she was attempting to get a good location. The caller did not know where she was or where the incident had occurred. Emergency Communications Officers Woolridge and House were fielding additional calls in relation to this incident and others, looking up potential suspects and victim information, requesting medical to respond, and reaching out and directing other agencies for support and assistance. While Emergency Communications Officer Patchen was working the primary radio channel during this incident, he was able to dispatch officers to respond to the scene with clear and concise information and steady voice. During this incident, the ECO's on duty were able to send a page to the special response team requesting both patrol and dispatch assistance. ECO's Leslie and Wickman reported to the Police Department as requested to provide further support during a complex and ever-changing event. ECO Odegaard jumped into the incident when coming on shift, taking over a radio channel to relieve others. The additional support of the SRT dispatchers and ECO Odegaard made a huge difference in the timeliness of completed requests and enabled further research into the suspects and victims to be completed, as well as recordings for further investigations. This situation would likely not have resulted in such a good outcome if it not for the teamwork of all the dispatchers and responders working on December 18th, 2020. They were able to communicate with each other during the call to promptly locate and assist the victim, coordinate the response of medical personnel, perform searches for people involved and associates while taking additional calls, radio traffic related to this and other incidents, relaying information to other agencies responding and completing any additional support requests from units on scene. This is an exceptional example of teamwork and why it's so important. It has a direct impact on the safety of our officers and the citizens of our community. So Lori Flood could come down, please.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
Thank you.
We'll see more applause till the end.
What's that? By order, the Chief of Police on this date, ECO Denise Woolridge is hereby awarded the distinguished service award.
Denise, thank you so much. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Love you. Good job, thank you. Congratulations, thank you. Thank you so much. Great job Denise. Okay, these number limits make it difficult.
They do. Hopefully we're almost through them.
The limits, not the awards.
By order, the Chief of Police on this date, ECO Christopher Patchen is hereby awarded the distinguished service award. Thank you so much for your service.
Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations on two fronts.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
Thanks.
Thank you, congratulations. Your wife's trying to get your picture and she's only got your back so far, so.
By order, the Chief of Police on this date, ECO Nicole Leslie is hereby awarded the distinguished service award.
Save the extra seven.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
Thanks for choosing to do what you do.
Congratulations.
Come on down.
By order, the Chief of Police on this date, ECO Hillary Wickman is hereby awarded the distinguished services award.
Yep. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job Hillary. Come down.
By order, the Chief of Police on this date, ECO Jordan Odegaard is hereby awarded the distinguished service award.
Jordan, thank you so much, great job on this. Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job Jordan.
Congratulations.
Will you join me?
By order, the Chief of Police on this date, ECO Jennifer House is hereby awarded the distinguished services award.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Congratulations. I'll read this a minute.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Great job Jennifer.
Thank you.
That was our communications officers, I'll read the patrol, four patrol officers here and then we'll bring them in as well. On November 15th, 2011, the City of Pulse Falls Police Department established the lifesaving award, which is presented to department members that have distinguished themselves by performing and reacting to a life-threatening situation in a positive and professional manner. The member's reaction to the situation must have saved or substantially prolonged the life of another person, existing with the strong possibility that if action were not taken, loss of life or critical injury to another person would have occurred. On December 18th, 2020, at approximately 1931 hours, Officer Knight responded to a suspicious call near the apartment complex at 30, in the 3600 block of Killdeer Avenue. According to call notes, the reporting party stated that two men had been walking toward her. She heard a pop noise and then both men ran in opposite directions. The reporting party also told communications that there was a vehicle parked on Charleville that was involved. When approaching the vehicle, the reporting party advised that there was one occupant that was not moving and appeared to be deceased. Officers Torres, arriving on scene first, reported to the male, was, reported to the male was unconscious with agonal breathing. Upon Officer Knight's arrival, she noticed blood in the seat coming from the male in the vehicle. Officer Knight and Officer Torres removed the male from the vehicle, placing him on the ground where they could further assess his condition. After further investigation, it was evident that the male was continuing to bleed from his upper left leg. Officer Flanagan applied a tourniquet to the male's upper left thigh. At this time, the male was not breathing. Officer Calderwood began chest compression CPR. Officer Calderwood performed chest compressions for almost a minute before the male began breathing again. It is without a doubt that the quick response and the skilled lifesaving efforts from these officers is why this man is alive today. These officers are truly a credit to this department. By order, the Chief of Police on this date, Officer Brendan Knight is hereby awarded the lifesaving award.
Congratulations, good job, congratulations Brenda.
Thank you very much.
Great job Brenda.
Sorry, had to save my, my brother out there.
Come on down Kelsey.
By order, the Chief of Police on this date, Officer Kelsey Torres is hereby awarded the lifesaving award.
That'd be great job.
Thank you.
Great job on this case.
Excellent.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job Kelsey, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi guys.
Come on down Evan. You stand next to me here. Have you faced that way? By order, the Chief of Police on this date, Officer Evan Flanagan is hereby awarded the lifesaving award.
Flanagan, thank you. Appreciate your work on this, great job. Thank you. Thank you Captain. Appreciate it. Great job, thank you.
Thank you sir.
Congratulations. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you sir.
Great job Evan, thank you sir.
Thank you.
Great family you got back there.
Last one.
My gosh, he even brought his dog.
Chief, I must be getting older because all these officers look awfully young.
You are. Confirmed.
You guys can say that and that's not breaking any HR rules.
Come on down Sean.
They're elected, it's okay.
By order, the Chief of Police on this date, Officer Sean Calderwood is hereby awarded the lifesaving award.
Great job, thank you.
Congratulations Sean, good job.
Thank you so much.
Great job Sean, thank you.
Thank you, now turn around there, your family is trying to get your picture.
Chief, thanks for bringing those forward and letting us be part of the award. It's wonderful to see the quality, the people we have working for us and. I think we get a little bit spoiled, we just come to expect it. But it's, it's awfully nice to get your department to recognize these folks for the job well done.
Thank you, appreciate that, we love doing it here, so it's a good chance for everyone to get to know everyone, so.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have a program on the, or a presentation on the Avista Gas Line Facility Replacement Program. And we have Jeff James from Avista on Zoom making the presentation.
Thank you everyone, I am gonna go ahead and share my screen here, so if someone wouldn't mind letting me know when you can see it, that would be fantastic.
We got it.
We got it, okay, great. So Mayor Jacobson, City of Pulse Falls Council members, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you about a project that I'll be coordinating the Pulse Falls area this year. My name is Jeff James and I am a customer project coordinator with the gas facilities replacement program, or as we call it, the GF RP at Avista Utilities. I've worked in the gas construction trade for the past 15 years and I have recently taken a new role with the GF RP. The gas facilities replacement program is in year 10 of an anticipated 20-year project. Our mission is to replace a first-generation plastic type of gas main, more commonly known in our industry as Al delay pipe. My goal tonight is to familiarize you with what we are doing, why we are doing it, and how we plan to accomplish our goals. So that in the event that questions or concerns arise from your citizens, you are able to connect them with me directly so that I can work to address them. At Avista, we strive to build and maintain good working relationships with local municipalities and maintain open lines of communication throughout our projects. This slide gives a good representation of the assets that we are upgrading. When this pipe was installed years ago, construction standards were not as stringent as they are today, particularly as it relates to mainline installation and backfill. The lower picture shows what a typical service line connection would look like in the ground. As you can see, the material around the pipe can be quite rocky. When this product was introduced, it was thought that these installation methods would be acceptable as this new technology was built and designed to lessen installation costs and lower maintenance needs. Over the years, however, it was found that this was not necessarily the case. You will notice in the upper left picture, up here, a, a crack on the inside of the pipe caused by rock impingement. Backfilling the main with native soil and rocky soil types proved to be detrimental to the life of the pipe. Another area of concern is in the service tap itself. The caps on these tees have a record of leaking after several years in service. And as a result, the GF RP was formed at Avista. So we think we can replace all of these assets throughout our service area, install new, more robust, modern assets according to day, according to today's construction standards. This issue is not unique to Avista. Companies all of the United States are replacing these problematic mainlines and service taps. It has been determined that the formula used to manufacture the pipe is the root of the issue. And the pipe manufactured between 1964 and 1984 is known to be manufactured using this formula. As a group, however, we are looking at all mains installed between 1964 and 1986, and even sometimes up to 1987, so that we can positively identify the manufacturer date by the lot number imprinted on the print line of the pipe. If the pipe was manufactured in 1985 or later, it does not need to be replaced because of an updated formula. While pipe manufactured in 1984 or earlier is addressed, we are specifically looking at mainline pipe with diameters between 1 and 1/4 inches and 4 inches in diameter. We use several, several different installation methods to replace these pipelines. Directional drilling is our preferred or go-to method when the soil conditions allow. We are able to install the new, the new main parallel to the old main and tie over the existing services to the new main with a minimal impact on the existing roadways. The middle picture here is a good picture of our HDD. One thing to note there is a long section of pipe can be installed with just two smaller cuts and smaller holes in the road. We have another trenchless method and it's called split and pull. This is used when the existing main has previously been installed in soil types that would meet today's construction standards and was previously installed at a depth that would also meet today's standards. In this method, a section of main is isolated and shut down. All of the services are also shut down and disconnected from the old main. A cable is then inserted into the old main and hooked up to the new main that is pulled through the same path as the old main with a cutter head in front of it. As the main is pulled through, the cutters actually split the old pipe and installed the new pipe right along the same path as the old one was installed in. This is a very good time-saving method, however, it is very specific in terms of the places where it can be utilized. It is best on long, straight sections of main where there are few laterals or service tie-overs. And then lastly, we have the tried and true open trench excavation method. We use this in instances where the soil is too rocky to be bored or impractical in terms of being able to keep the pipe to death because of large rocks or, or solid rock even below us. This allows us to make sure that the, the new pipe is installed at a very specific depth and that the backfill is done in accordance to the new updated standards in terms of material underneath the pipe and material over the top of the pipe. This minimizes the potential for damage to the new pipe in these rockier soil conditions. With any trenchless excavation or installation methods, there is a need to identify existing utilities in the ground. We have a contractor who has the capability to use keyhole technology along with hydro excavation. This allows them to keyhole a spot in the ground, open up that existing utility using a vac truck and water excavation, which means less impact to the roads, a smaller hole, and a much less damage potential to the existing utility than traditional excavation methods. These cores, if the road is in good shape, can also be, can also be reinstated and meet regional paving guidelines. We've used these with DOT in many municipalities and they've worked very well for us. All pavement cuts are compacted and compaction tested by a third party. Additionally, all permanent pavement repairs are contracted to a third-party paving contractor. Pavement repairs generally begin immediately after the mainline installation and service tie-overs are completed. We are mindful of the limited seasons that the local asphalt plants have, so we make sure to only open up what we can permanently, permanently repair before winter arrives. One of the newest technologies that we're able to use this year is particularly exciting for us. We have contracted with a sewer inspection company called Hydromax to do all of our pre and post construction inspections. They arrive before the construction crew and camera inspect all of the sewer mains and laterals up to the foundation of the home to make sure that there are no pre-existing damages that need to be addressed before we begin our work. Also, when our work is complete, they go through and re-camera all the sewer mains and laterals up to the foundation to make sure that there was no damage done by us while we were in the area doing construction. The main difference between Hydromax and our previous contractor is their technology-forward approach. All of their lines are surveyed using ArcGIS and then accurately mapped for the construction crew. This is shown on the left side of this slide. What's also nice about this is that these can be shared with local municipalities with ArcGIS. So I know that in my past, in my history of actually installing and working in the field on a lot of this stuff, this would have been particularly valuable to some small towns where we've gone in and done work and they quite literally had no idea where sewer laterals were and things because there was no effect of ASBILs in some of these small towns that are up to 100 years old. So this is a really nice deal that we've got and it's actually a value-added, you know, thing that we have that we can share. So we're, we're pretty excited about that. Our next slide addresses our construction processes and standards. When it comes to utility locating, we use the traditional 811 locating one-call system. We also use ground penetrating radar in areas where maybe the utility is unlocatable or maybe it's a, on private property, something such as a septic leach field or a septic tank or anything of that nature. Things that we need to find and identify before we begin work that can't be located through traditional means, ground penetrating radar can generally pick those up. Ground penetrating radar can generally pick those up. And as I mentioned earlier, Hydromax is used for sewer main and lateral camera technology, and that is pre- and post-construction. Permitting, with this project, we will have permits submitted to the Post Falls Highway Department as well as the City of Post Falls. When we are in some areas, Avista has the need to go in and do some welds on a steel main before our contractor gets out there, so those permits will be handled by Avista personnel, but all other permitting will be handled by the project coordinator for NPL, that Northern Pipeline, our contractor for this work. All environmental permitting is handled in-house by Todd McLaughlin, our in-house environmental specialist, and he provides SWIPs for all of the jobs and all of the crews, and we also have a CECL that goes around and checks on all of the jobs that we have going concurrently. So all of the environmental needs are addressed internally by Avista. For traffic control, we use Traffic Core. We've had great success with them. They've been very responsive to our needs, very easy to work with, and they also work very well with the public. We've got really nothing but good things to say about the work that they have done for us. They are also able to provide traffic, excuse me, site-specific traffic control panels as Our paving is done by Poe Asphalt, and they are very familiar with all the regional asphalt cut policies and the reinstatement needs of everywhere. Again, we have great success with them. They have followed us around for a few years now and do good work for us. This includes, if necessary, installation of gas mains and archeryals. Budinger is the compaction testing company that we use. Communication with the City of Post Falls has already been established. I presented a very similar presentation to this with the City of Post Falls, and we came upon a central point of contact. So I am aware of their inspectors, they are aware of our inspectors, they have points of contact with everybody necessary at Avista, at NPL, and third-party inspecting, and there will also be daily emails sent out by our contract foreman that the City of Post Falls will be included on. Our point of contact currently is James Ballsbury with the City of Post Falls and Mike Lenz with the Post Falls Highway Department. Mike and I also met and did more of a one-on-one presentation there just to go over the portions of work that we're going to do that fall under his jurisdiction. Project communication. Notification letters have already been sent out to people who live in the neighborhoods affected by our construction, so those are sent out beforehand. They provide good information on what's going on, what's going to happen, and just give them points of contact where we can be reached to address any questions or concerns. As the work progresses, if there's work that needs to be done behind a locked gate or a meter needs to be shut down for any reason, we do have door hangers, and so we can tag doors, so we hopefully can reach people when they get home from work, and we can coordinate that work with them at the time that works best for them. NPL, like I mentioned earlier, will provide daily crew-tracking emails to the City of Post Falls and the Post Falls Highway Department, so everyone is on the same page in terms of where we are and how much longer we anticipate being there. All calls and inquiries from residents will be directed to me, the project coordinator. That includes any calls that come in through our call center. That includes anyone that has my contact information from the letters, or there's an Avista website that has my contact information on it as well. Additionally, I have a special set of cards that I hand out to all the flaggers, because it seems like in these projects, a lot of times, you know, people who live in the neighborhoods are asking flaggers what's going on, and so that's a good opportunity for them to give them a card with my contact information so I can handle all of those concerns. The Avista web link has maps and project information for customers, and that link has been shared with the City of Post Falls to add to their page as well, so we should have really good exposure there. These are some of the items that they're kind of, you know, maybe call them a frequently-asked questions page there, and it addresses things such as calling out by name who our contractor is and letting them know that they will be very easily identified, and they will have picture ID on them. You know, there are concerns of people running around and doing scams, and we want to make sure that the citizens can be comfortable knowing that this contractor is going to be showing up to your neighborhood, it's going to say "under contract" to Avista on their door, and if you have any questions whatsoever, every one of them should be able to provide you with a company Avista-provided photo identification. It lets them know that they're going to be receiving letters and lets them know that as the project begins to near their home, the general foreman on the job will reach out to them to make sure that they can coordinate access 100% of the time to the customer's home, so there will never be a time where, let's say, you know, they can't get into their driveway. If we are open trenching, we utilize a very large number of steel plates, so even if there is a big trench in front of their home, we will have steel plates across that, so they will always be able to get in and out of their house. And if there has to be any interruption in their service, that will be coordinated with them ahead of time. If during this process we find gas meters that are perhaps outdated or need to be updated or rebuilt, we have service techs that make contact with them to let them know that we are going to, during this process, while we're here and touching it anyways, we are going to upgrade your gas meter. You wouldn't believe how old some of the equipment that we find in the field is, and so this is a good opportunity to upgrade and maintain everything while we're at it. If we are unable to access your home when we've completed the work in your area, we can leave notification that when you get home, call this number, and an Avista-employed serviceman will come out and relight any appliances that you need relit. It addresses the fact that many times the utilities right-of-way goes anywhere from 10, 5 to 10 feet behind the curb, and so sometimes a service connection will actually happen within the customer's yard, but it also reassures them that their yard will be replaced back to the state that they expect. So our crews are very good about if they've got to go in and do some work in the yard, they cut the grass, they put out a tarp, they move the grass aside, they expose what needs to be done, they put it back together, and they put that grass right back in the same place it was before. We've been doing this for quite some time, and we've got a very, very good record of leaving things at least as good as we found them. This is the link that provides all of this information at the bottom of the sheet. This next map shows the areas where we have projects planned for this year. So areas outlined in yellow are what we break down as phases. So we have the yellow phases that we plan on completing this year. Now, some of these phases like this is Phase 8, are quite large geographically, but if you notice inside, I'm sure it's very hard to see, but we are only replacing the little sections of Pink Main, just little bits, and that's how it was installed over the years. Oftentimes, there was a neighborhood that was primarily on steel gas main, where they would want to do a short extension to pick up another house, and so they would put a short section of this Aldelay pipe in. So that's what we're replacing. So when you see these large geographical areas, that does not by any means mean that we are going in to the entirety of that neighborhood and disrupting every person in this neighborhood. These are very small sections. We are starting here, this is our Phase 2, and that is in the District of, Post Falls Highway District jurisdiction there. So we were out earlier this week and laying out running lines and getting established there what we're going to do. You will see a blue area here. Now, that is an area where we have pipe that is installed in that questionable timeframe. So what we, our intentions are here is to go in and pothole that pipe in several locations so we can positively identify the manufacturer date according to that print line, and what we should be able to and anticipate being able to do is turn it green like this phase down here, where we were able to go in and pothole and positively identify that the pipe did not need to be replaced. So using the vacuum excavation, we should be able to wipe out that phase. And lastly, the orange phases are there in case our contractor gets very ahead of schedule and has additional time left in their construction season, or we get, for whatever reason, under budget. And so these are additional footages that we may or may not be able to pick up this And that is it. So I suppose now if anyone has questions, I would love to answer them for you.
Thank you, Jeff. Good information. How long do you think this is going to take for you to complete your work in the City of Post Falls?
We are looking at, optimistically, mid-September to late September.
Okay. Do you finish them all up this year, though?
And out of your hair. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much for the information.
All right. Thank you all very much for your time, and I appreciate it.
Your bet. Next on the agenda is pedestrian rapid flashing beacons, Spokane Street and Pole Line. Mr. Melvin.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, I don't have a presentation, just a very brief announcement for you this evening. Several months ago, I was before you with some safety concerns at pedestrian crosswalks on Spokane Street and Pole Line Avenue, had an expressed, you know, very aggressive behavior when I tried to cross at those locations. I wanted to compliment the Public Works Department for funding and completing the installation of those rapid rectangular flashing beacons that we were looking for at this time. I since had gone up to the site, had crossed numerous times like I had done before, and this time, everybody stopped appropriately, they were very courteous, I had the drivers actually waving at me as opposed to maybe some of the previous hand gestures, and it was just such a dramatically different experience that I had. So very much a needed safety improvement to it. We wanted to announce to you that they had completed that, and again, my compliments and thanks to Ross and his crew with the Street Division for getting that work completed. It was just a really good safety improvement for the community. I was quite concerned, so that's all I had, real brief.
Thank you, Bill. And, you know, I appreciate the effect and the safety added by these rapid flashing beacons.
Yes.
But as I said before, when we see them, especially with school kids, we've got to encourage him to push the button, because oftentimes, I'll be driving to work and I'll see kids going to school crossing those, in the crosswalks, but I don't know if it's not cool or what, but oftentimes they don't push the button, and if it's dark out, you don't see them. So again, thanks for making sure that these were done, but again, encourage everybody to push your buttons when you cross.
You had brought that up before, and we'll reach out to the school and see if they can't do some internal education with that. So thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Bill.
Mayor, I have a question. At Spokane Street and Pole Line?
No, they were, there were two on Spokane Street at 11th and 15th Avenue and one on Pole Line at CECL, by the school up there. So there are three different locations, yes.
I hadn't seen them.
It's like, what's going on? No. Thank you. Good question.
Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Any declarations of conflict, ex parte contacts, and site visits? Seeing none, would you please present the consent calendar?
Item A is minutes from the March 16th, 2021 city council meeting. Item B is payables, March 9th through March 9th. That's obviously incorrect. Do we know what the correct dates are?
March 22nd.
March 9th through, 9th through March 22nd, 2021. Item C is farm lease with Terry Nichols for 80 acres. Item D is farm lease with Satchel Farms for 151 acres. Item E is deed of part of water rights, 95-2141 to Ross Point Water District. Item F is acceptance of donation scoreboard upgrade from Post Falls Little League. Item G is consent to annex agreement with Robert Schauer and Christina Nysinger. Item H is mutual aid agreement between Post Falls Police Department and Cootney County Sheriff's Office. Item I is acceptance of grants of easement for Platts of Jasmine Edition. Item J is Pleasant View West Annexation File ANNX-0006-2020 Reasoned Decision. Item K is additional services agreement with TO Engineers to pre-qualify contractors for the construction of the Ponderosa Lift Station replacement. Item L is Post Falls Landing Amphitheater Turf Proposals.
Any questions on the consent calendar?
I've moved to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Our next item up is public hearings, and the one we had scheduled was canceled, followed by unfinished business, returning ordinances and resolution. We do have one resolution and one ordinance.
I would move to approve the resolution.
I'm sorry, Linda. The ordinance is removed. I apologize.
Right. I saw that. Thank you. I would move to approve the resolution, comprehensive plan amendment CPA 0002-2020.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion? Shannon, please take the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Orders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. If the canceled on that second item was any bigger, I may have seen it.
Need one of those flashing lights.
Yeah. New business, tonight we do have one item, Post Falls Little League Field Use Memorandum of Understanding.
Well, there we go. Brad?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk through this MOU that we've worked on to establish with our local Little League organization. Really what this MOU does is puts into writing and memorializes the longstanding relationship with, that we have with that service organization to the community. And just kind of a little bit of background in how we've gotten here, our Little League, as you had in the consent agenda item today, they have a history of making field improvements, and this not only stands with just our Park and Rec facilities, but also the school district facilities that we manage, the scheduling on, under our local joint use agreement with that group or with that organization. In general, that's gone on for, since I was a Parker Nutt kid and beyond, so that organization, they have a longstanding commitment to these facilities, and we wanted to recognize that or they had a desire to recognize that in the way we schedule, in the way we bill for the facilities and recognize their improvements and the maintenance that they have on those school district facilities that they manage or that they utilize heavily in the spring and otherwise. So this is just attempting to put all that into order, and I'll go through a couple of the highlights here. We have been seeing some changes in the last four years as it relates to just other users, and that's resulted in the way we've assessed fees and the impacts that the Little League group is having on just their access to the facility. So in that time, we've agreed and have recognized their historic use by giving them a 15-day head start on making reservations. So what that looks like is our Parks and Rec facility, our Parks and Rec internal programs, and our school district, they get to start making reservations, or we try to establish that the 1st of February. We open up to our Little League group in the middle of February, around the 15th, and it gives them a two-week head start before the season opens up for our regular users. Then, the, they have to make payment by basically the first, the last of March, and they also have the ability under this, as we had in our consent agenda item, for them to make improvements on a one-off or ongoing-type agreement that are that are mutually beneficial to the league and to the city facilities to offset those fees. It's, it's worked for us. They, they just completed this improvement that was valued at a little over $13,500. And that's not including all the time and labor that, that they put into project managing that improvement. So the, the ongoing use of the school district facilities, or primarily around the Frederick Post Fields, and the agreement outlines that they will be the maintenance responsible, have primary maintenance responsibility for all of the improvements on that that are related to the, the sport. And then the, they have dedicated use basically from March 1st through July 15th. At that point, it opens up to the general community. On the city fields, they have the priority schedule once again. And then they have an option for basically dedicated use on the earlier block of hours, so up until 6:00 PM. And then it leaves an opening for other users to come in for practices after their games finish up. And that's for the 19th Street and Brett James Field is primarily their use. And so as long as they're within that March 1st through July 15th in that time block before the 6:00 PM on the weekdays, then they get their discounted rate of 50% of whatever the, the council has as an established field fee. In that, the city still maintains the facilities, and that's in part because we have other users utilizing the facility outside of those hours. And we owe a quality facility that's at the level that the community expects. Oh, any of those type, the Little League's not on them. And we have to maintain that level of safety for the community. So that's a primary reason for that. Beyond that, we have some items in here that allow for us to make a decision to cancel the agreement under a certain amount of time and ensure that the league is following other items and state code that we just need to do with, with general MOUs. So with that, I'd stand for any questions you might have on, on the MOU.
Brian, I think that's, just as you said, kind of memorializes the relationship you've had with Little League. So I, I personally don't see any huge changes that you're bringing forward, but I appreciate the information. Counsel, any comments? Joe?
Well, it's just a quick question, which I think you might have just answered already. But are there any major differences in the relationship versus what, how it's been for the last 30 years that is memorialized in this agreement? Or is it just literally business as usual, but here it is in writing?
So it's, it's business as usual with one little hiccup that happened about four or five years ago. When we established our new field fees, those fees were something that the league was not anticipating. And they brought us, brought it back to us as, we need to come up with a, a solution here. And what that resulted in is the scoreboard improvement that you just saw wrap up today. And so we brought that forward to council, and you mutually agreed that this was a benefit to the community and benefit to the league, and it helped them be able to stay solvent as a league and, and service to the community. So yes, business as usual, but it definitely arose out of, the need to, to document this this way definitely arose out of a problem that we didn't anticipate when we, when we established the fees, to try to balance the use between this user group and the other user groups who are finding in the community.
Thank you. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I read to the agreement, Brian. I think that's great. Are you seeing any pressure from, say, the baseball clubs now that want to rent the fields more? That mainly just tournament teams that are traveling, or a lot of these kids, the same kids that are playing Little League and tournament teams?
So we do have a little, a, a dynamic with the pressure from, from club or select ball, travel ball teams, and some tournaments. Last year was kind of our peak for tournaments. I'd say we ran probably seven or eight. It's hard to tell exactly. This was in a COVID year, right? We, we still ran seven or eight tournaments. Our current fee structure doesn't necessarily lend itself to just booking it as a tournament. So what we found is folks were booking field time and running around robbing a tournament, if you will. So it's a little, little hard to try to, to lock that down because we don't have that dedicated regional park facility that we have plans for, that really lends itself to tournament play. We see this kind of one-off tournament here, but it's also bridging across other communities to, to host. So yes, those dynamics are there. Some of the select ball, we're not seeing as large a demand as maybe some other areas do because our field inventory is so limited right now for our nine to 12 age group and our 13, 14s on the 90-foot bases. So because of that, those demands and the limited access in, in the early spring, they often find other facilities, whether it's school district, or, and I know some of our local teams are even going up into Rathrum to find field time. And so there, there are some definite pressure points. That's, that's kind of the lay of the land right now. And then in this past COVID year, we had other unusual demands because we are so close to the border. We saw use midday reservations for private coaches, for college athletes, and professional, semi-pro and minor league professional athletes. They were coming over here and using Brett James Field during the middle of the day, when we typically would have the field not reserved so we could complete maintenance. The facility was staying busy weekday, spring, during the middle of the day. So we'll see what happens with that this next year. I know the increased use definitely increased our quality of field because it was being accessed and used. So all of those are good things for the community, and it'll be interesting to see what that demand looks like this next year.
So I guess my question, if this agreement does help protect the Little League being able to host the district tournament, or if they get a state tournament, they'd still get the priority?
They would, they would be within that July 15th date. So they would, they would have enough time.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Thanks, Brian. Administrative staff reports. Tonight, we update on the proposed growth initiative. Mr. Wilson?
You need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I would move to approve the Post Falls Little League Field Use Memorandum of Understanding.
Second. Motion a second or two. For the questions. Roll call, please.
Borders?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. I'm not quite up to my game tonight. I think it's because we had an extra week off. Either that or I'm just not very observant. So I apologize. Thank you, Shannon. Now, how about administrative staff reports? You updated a proposed growth initiative.
Thank you. So I don't have a prepared presentation tonight. I did want to give you a chance to ask any questions you might have about the initiative process, given the petition that was filed some, probably 15, 20 days ago at this point, maybe a little bit longer, and the certificate of review that we issued last Thursday. Briefly, a quick synopsis of what the process looks like. Generically, a petitioner can begin this process by filing with the city, the county for that matter, a proposed initiative petition with, they have to have 20 signatures of verified voters that live within that jurisdiction. That gets them started. From there, then the city attorney gets that petition and has 20 working days to issue what's called a certificate of review. And the statute's kind of wide open. It essentially says matters of substantive import. We're supposed to look at that petition and essentially weigh in on if there's issues that need to be addressed or not, substantive issues affecting the initiative. From there, we return that back to the petitioner, who then has 15 working days to consider the, the certificate of review. If they elect to move forward from that point in time, they bring that back to the city clerk, resubmit that, and then we have 10 working days to assign two different ballot titles and also to create the form of the petition. There's a whole host of things that need to go on the face of the petition. It's, it's a little like a Rubik's Cube, trying to fit in a lot of information and a little, little bit of real estate. That's typically what the process looks like. We don't see many of these across the state. They don't, we don't see a lot of local petitions. We don't see honestly that many at the state level either. It is, it's an item that is baked into our state constitution. It's interesting that it's limited to the rules established by the legislature. The constitution specifically says the citizen's right to initiative and referenda is based on the rules established by the legislature. In 2015, the legislature essentially, prior to that date, cities across the state had their own initiative rules. We had our own initiative rules. In 2015, the legislature decided it makes sense to have one uniform set of initiative referenda guidelines across the state for local initiatives. And so they changed state law. Essentially, we ended up having to repeal our local rules, and we follow now the state guidelines. Those guidelines were amended again in 2018 to specifically prohibit initiatives dealing with local land use matters. It's pretty explicit in the code that that's procedural hurdle to get over. You just can't, you can't do an initiative on land use items. We read through all of the minutes of the legislative committees that evaluated that bill. We listened to all of the recordings of the debate. It's pretty clear that that's what the, this was what the legislature intended to prohibit, was any local initiative petitions dealing with land use matters. That's, takes up probably the first half of the substantive issues in our certificate of review. There's a bunch of other items that we've addressed. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to look at it. It comes off longer than it is. It's, it's about 15 pages of analysis. The rest of the 100 or so pages is attachments because you want to make sure that people have everything at hand that you looked at so they can go back and look at what you were looking at. So as I said, we sent that out the door on Thursday. At this point, we have not heard back from the petitioner as to what their plans are, where they intend to go. So that's essentially what I can tell you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about what happens next, to the extent that I can answer those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. That was a, I, I thought that the summary, the response and the packet itself was, was very thorough, was, contained very good explanations, and we visited earlier today. And what changed in 2018 is something used to be able to be brought forward, even if it was deemed to be legal, and then decided once the initiative was brought forward. But in 2018, that changed to where if it's not legal, if it's not allowed under the state code, we cannot accept that and move that forward. And the other thing we talked about is it's not the city trying to throw up a roadblock. We're adhering to state, state law. And if any, anybody wants to change that, it's got to go through the state. Fair enough. Is that?
Yeah, that's correct. And that's actually came out in the, the debate in the Senate in particular. Senator Rice in particular made reference to you can still do initiatives to change state law. You could change the Local Land Use Planning Act by running a statewide initiative. You just can't change local land use matters through the initiative process. And that's because state statute sets out a process that we have to follow when we're doing land use matters. And you can't change state law by amending a local ordinance. And so we still have to follow the state law.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next up, Regional Growth and Housing Issue Partnership. Mr. Seal.
I'm back, Mayor and Council. So I know that it has come up as a topic. It has been known. I think it was in the paper. It was previously referred to as a type of growth coalition. The local cities, so the area city, basically the planners and the community development directors for Post Falls, Coeur d'Alene, Rathrum, and Hayden, got together to discuss the fact that, that they used to meet as, as a group just to kind of talk about how each city is doing things. But also at this time, we are seeing tremendous amount of, of, of pushback or concerns or discussions regarding the growth that's happening within the area. So we are in coordination with Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, and Rathrum, establishing what is now called the Regional Housing, or I'm sorry, Regional Growth, oh, Regional Housing and Growth Issues Partnership. The name kept changing. We, there was a lot of discussion about that. Because we really wanted, did want to show that this is about a partnership. This is about area, cities, and the county, and other organizations working together to find out what the solutions are and what the issues are that everyone is facing at this time. It will also, the, the working group will also include the county and KMPO. We are, will also be establishing an advisory group. The advisory group's going to consist of organizations, individuals from the community, various, what else did I have on here? School districts even. I believe now it's been looked at as inviting the governor's office for them to be able to view it. It's going to be held on Zoom. The, the working group members, the four city planners or community development directors and county and KMPO will be the, the ones that are actually panelists, whereas the advisory group will be listed as participants, but can provide input when a topic that is being discussed is part of their, their wheelhouse essentially. The cities are inviting a council member to attend and be engaged in, whether it's, I'm not 100% sure whether we have decided, I think it's at the working group level or at the advisory level. Either way, we're looking for input from everyone. We want everybody knowing what's going on. The, the meetings will be recorded, and they will be provided, you know, to the public for transparency purposes. And I know that Coeur d'Alene has already determined a council member that was going to be on it, as well as Hayden is basically doing the same thing that I'm asking now. Would you like to have a representative from the city council on the partnership to be engaged? And if so, is there someone that you would like to have engaged? And do you have any questions?
I have questions.
Yes.
So how long is this partnership going to last? Is this indefinitely, or is this because there's issues right now that it exists to?
I think that it's going to be more of an indefinite type of committee. I know that we haven't discussed any length of, length of time on it. We do recognize that there are lots of issues now that are, you know, kind of hot plate type of, you know, issues that we need to address, look at, and educate the public on partially, or educate everyone on. You know, so it is more of something that I, I would probably see it happening at least for the next year. And then going on beyond that, we'll reevaluate it. A lot, big part of it, I'll just kind of read what has been described as the initial vision statement almost, just to kind of give you an idea as to what we're looking at. It doesn't talk about time. It will be meeting once a month, I think on, at 3:00 PM on a Monday. We have not determined exactly which Monday that is yet. Again, this is all new. This is all starting. But kind of what is listed here was the kind of like, thought of as like a vision statement. The goals are to establish a diverse resource group that can provide factual answers to community and official, and officials' questions, put forward solutions and a framework for implementation based on data-supported issues with input on what the community wants, provide education on what is and is not possible, and work together on regional topics that affect all regarding housing and growth in Cootney County. So it's, it's a, it's a big, broad topic. There's a lot of little things that, there's a lot of big things that will need to be tackled. And, you know, honestly, the first one at the top of the list essentially is to come up with some frequently asked questions to try and begin to get stuff out there. There's a lot to go. It's over.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, well, you mentioned the four, the four cities. Is Cootney County planning and development involved in this too then?
Yes, David Callahan, the, the community development director, has been there. And I believe, yes, and I believe Chris Filios is going to be.
Five, five entities, Senator, all?
And KM, and KMPO as well. KMPO is an additional organization, but yes.
Counsel, we've got staff representative. Do we care to have a council representative as well? I'd volunteer to do it. Counsel, what do you think?
I think it's great. If it wasn't for a Monday, then I'd be interested, but.
Then I have another question. So decisions are not going to be made by this group?
I mean, it's not like, there's, there is not going to be any kind of voting or decisions or anything that, that, that each individual city is going to be like forced to implement. There is not going to be any kind of quorum. There's no open meeting issues happening here. This is mostly, this is just, it's really talking bigger issues. Okay, so we have, so we have a housing problem. What do we, what types of solutions do we have to that? And it's mostly, a lot of it's just discussions. I mean, in reality.
It's no, it's no policy, more informational and resource?
Exactly, yes. You know, anything that kind of comes out of it would be brought to, such as the city council, be like, hey, this is an idea of a policy that we have been, begun to develop. Is this something that the council would like to see? And then if, if a policy were to develop, it would go through that whole process with the council.
So does the public have to be appointed to be? So does the public have to be appointed to be on the committee or can the public just attend?
The public would, so there are various agencies that will be invited to have an attendee. The public will be able to view it after it has been recorded and put out there. And they could also submit further information. The public that is being invited will also be provided with the opportunity to provide input.
So the general public, if it, if it was just an individual that said, I, I have an interest in knowing or being part of the discussion, John or Jane Q. Citizen?
We want to, we're still trying to sort out all that stuff, but I also, it, we can't create a open forum with 2,000 people attending via Zoom and, and get input that way. That's why we're inviting certain organizations to assign potential participants to that advisory group.
And there will be citizens?
We do want to, we, we really are trying to gather information from the general public. So that's why we're doing a very broad outreach. And that list continues to grow and we continue to take input as to whom should be, you know, from what groups should be, should be invited.
And there will be citizens on the advisory committee?
Yes, oh, absolutely, yeah.
Can I do 1.5 more questions?
Sure. 1.5.
1.5, because it's the same question, but it's for each of you. I'm not sure, Ron, but I know that in the past, do you meet informally with the other mayors in Cootney County on a, you know, quarterly basis?
I don't meet, but I talk with Mayor Widmire quite often. Very little contact with Mayor Holmes and some contact with Mayor Griffith.
And so, Bob, I would ask you the same. With your counterparts, your peers or Shelley in the cities, do you?
I have had coffee with the community development director in Hayden as well as Coeur d'Alene, yes.
Because this just seems.
And, and, and for me, I also will go to, say, a conference. And at that conference are planners or community development directors or people within that field. Absolutely.
So Counselors Thorson and City administrators do meet monthly and sometimes quarterly with COVID, it's been delayed. I would recommend that, I feel like this committee has not really established exactly what they're going to do, who's going to be on it. There's a lot of unanswered questions, that this come back and perhaps if Counselor Wolf's going to serve on it, that he provides some regular reports to council to let them know what's going on. And then council can choose whether they want to continue to participate or not continue to participate. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
We have to trust Allen, though?
Yeah, yeah. He's our lead. Your lead is on.
Rules and stuff, right?
Find out what the end game is.
Do we need any kind of motion for that?
So it's, I don't know. This is sort of an ad hoc evolving situation. So it's, at the moment, I don't even know at this point what is being created. I think we're so early in this, it's hard to tell what form this is going to take. It might be as simple as a group that gets together and meets for a while and, and shares information and that may be it. It might be something that evolves into something that's more longstanding, that's, I don't want to use KMPO necessarily as the example, but something like that where we continue to want to have a, a representation on a regional growth forum, if, if you will. And so I don't know that we need a motion tonight, but at some point, as this becomes more formalized, we may want to formalize the structure and how we create appointments to that body.
Okay, so if council wishes to be represented and chooses Mr. Wolf, he can just come back and keep us posted and we'll.
Yeah, and, and as this thing evolves, we'll keep an eye on it and go from there.
Counsel, is that okay with everyone?
Perfect.
Okay. Great. I think he'll be paid commensurately.
I'll give you my list of questions to ask.
Yeah, okay. Get them to me before Monday morning.
Thanks, Bob.
Next item up is citizens issue in this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the council regarding a city-related issue that is not on the agenda. If anyone wishes to speak, come forward, give your name, please, and we've got five minutes on the timer.
My, my name is Sharon Alexander. I'm a native of Post Falls and I now live here for the last almost six years. I, first of all, would like to thank you for not annexing in Telomore. I feel that we have other areas that we need to be working on and taking care of the older areas before, before we start adding into new. The reason why I'm saying this is that I have been here before and sometimes I feel like I'm not being heard except through the police department. And I feel that you as a city council and the mayor needs to be listening to our residents here. First of all, about the growth, first of all, about the, the traffic that is out there. Where I live is on Poline and I know you don't realize that that probably wasn't going to become the, the highway, I call it, and so does our residents, that it has become. There's over 55,000 to 56,000 cars. We have three schools on that area and there is nothing being done to slow it down. They are now racing on those, on those streets. You've shut down the Telomore because of the park and children crossing. We have three schools that children walk from to go home every day. And I do not see, but the police, I have to call them in order for them to come up there and patrol that. With the growth that's coming in here into Post Falls, it's a darn chain. That we are not getting more results from the council except annexing in, annexing in, building more apartments. I'm sorry to say that the people that are moving in here are from California and Washington State and they are rude. They're arrogant people. I have been confronted by them like six times and I'm really tired of it. It's not fair. It's not fair to our businesses. It's not fair to the way that they are treating our businesses. We are a small town and the friendliness is going right down the toilet, excuse me, but that's what's happening. But to get back onto Poline, you need to do something. There is no speed signs up there. They're jake braking because of the big trucks that are coming in there with the construction. When they start on 41, that is going to be the main road, which is still the main road coming in. I go out Poline to 41 and I can sit there for 10 minutes before I cross the road. And that is at 8:30 in the morning. The lines are backed up on the south side, they're backed up on the north side and they're backed up on the, on the west side heading east. I really hope and I would invite you to come to my house and listen to the noise that we have to put up with on Poline. And I'm also sorry to say that I have more, um, I don't even know what the word would be. When I lived in Coeur d'Alene for 45 years, I had an open door policy with the mayor and the council. And those people even came to my house to see what was going on on Honeysuckle. So I am inviting you to come out to our area and see what is going on. You can sit there at the American Legion and watch the cars. Buses are also included in that. These are bus drivers that are driving our children to school and they do not slow down. So I'm really asking you, please help us as the residents that have lived here and have communicate or have contribute to the community of Raffrum, Hayden Lake, Coeur d'Alene and Post Falls, to please try and stop the growth. Take a look at what we have, take care of the people that are here, that have lived here all our lives. We are being aced out of our homes, our retirement homes. We've worked here, we've put money into the community and now we're being exited out of our homes. So I'm really appalling you. Please, sit back and take a look at what's happening to our community. And please take a look at what's happening on Poline because somebody's going to get killed on there eventually. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, it seems to me, didn't we have a, I can't remember, did Rob Paulus do, I thought he made a presentation through the PD on traffic study?
Yes, both the police department and Rob Paulus worked on a presentation and provided it on Poline and the complaints from Ms. Alexander. We can go back and pull that information and get it updated.
I thought that was the case, ma'am. We, we, we hear what you're saying and the engineering department, police department will look at it again, but presentation was made after a study was done on Poline.
Okay, so I can tell you.
No, ma'am, that's, we can't, you've got to be up here, your time's up. But I just want to let you know that, that we hear what you're saying and, and we will ask them to look at it again. Ma'am, you can contact the engineering department. Bill, maybe you can visit with her. But we just, we just can't have comments from the audience because they're not recorded, so. That's right. Next, someone else wish to speak? Bob?
Well, we reached that time of year again where the temperature's finally going up. But what happens when the temperatures go up? Our irrigation systems on our homes get charged and we start watering our lawns again. Well, you got this big old section on your bill that, that's based on water usage called wastewater that actually doubles the size of my bill. And to everybody else that irrigates their lawns that like a beautiful green lawn. I'm here to say that I don't believe that that wastewater charge is fair. I'm not even sure it's legal because you're not treating this water that we're putting on our lawns. We're, we're irrigating with it. We're not wasting, we're not shoving it down the city sewer or anyplace else. We're using it on our lawns. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't count as wastewater. And, okay, if I'm wrong, Shelley, tell me because I really do, because that bill keeps getting bigger and bigger, that wastewater, you got to be basing it on something.
It's a sewer.
And the way it looks like it's based on your water usage.
For residential, it is not based on water usage. So we charge per equivalent resident, residential unit for wastewater. So everybody's single-family residents receives the same wastewater amount billed every month and it is not affected by water usage.
So you're telling me that that's not going to go up again this year when I start irrigating my lawn?
The wastewater does not go, it goes up October 1st of every year.
Yes.
After the fee increase, it does not go up when you have your water usage. Now, you do have a water usage for the actual irrigation being used.
Of course.
Yeah.
The wastewater is the sewer bill.
That's, and that bill has gotten just completely out of.
But take a look at your bill and see, because from what Shelley says is your, your belief that your wastewater bill is going up because of the irrigation is not true. So take a look at your bill and if you see something contrary, let us know.
I will look at it and if I am wrong, I will apologize and I'll inform my neighbors because they all believe the same thing.
Yeah, let us know.
Mayor, can you please just tell Bob that we're in that sewer upgrade and the reason that that's going up every year, that was explained over the last 14 years? That that, it, it has been explained.
I have seen it go up with you.
Yeah, it's been about 14, it's, it's the master plan going up and that's why it's changed October 1st.
Yeah.
Yes, it changes October 1st of every year. We will be undergoing a rate study in fiscal year '21 and '22, reevaluating all of that, so.
Well, that all goes into this uncontrolled growth that we've been going through, so.
Thanks, sir.
We wouldn't need bigger facilities if we didn't have uncontrolled growth.
Sir, did you wish to speak? Name for the record, please.
My name is Dan Robinson. I'm a new resident to the area. Thank you for my, my chance to speak today. I don't have a lot of experience talking in front of the council, so if I don't know the protocol or procedure, please excuse me. My main reason today was to get some practice attending meetings, but I have a pretty, pretty standard issue to bring up and that is the rental increases for rental residents. My concern is that the, the income of your standard resident is not going to be keeping pace with the projected increase in value of local real estate. And so as renters, we're going to be impacted with an increasing rental rate that is based on real estate and not our ability to actually pay bills. So every year, we're going to be getting more, a higher percentage of our take-home pay is going to be going towards rent, which is, in other words, our ability to pay rent will be becoming increasingly difficult because of the, the growth in the real estate values. And I was wondering if the council would consider or at least acknowledge that, that may be a strain on the residents. Does the council see that by chance?
First of all, welcome. Thank you for attending the meeting tonight. The city does not have rent control, the city does not see, does not set rental rates. And I, I believe we do agree that prices are going up. And, you know, we hear people who want no more growth because of, the value of real estate keeps increasing. And I would like to see growth be more sustainable, however, if it's supply and demand as well. And if there are no houses built, if there are no more apartments built, what we have now because of the demand is going to continue to increase. But from the city's perspective, we do not participate in rent control, we do not participate in setting any rents on any properties in the city. I do appreciate what you're saying, though, is that the costs have in fact gone up, so we do acknowledge that.
All right, sir. Well, would you have a suggestion for an avenue that we could have some kind of help in, in establishing a more accurate guideline for property owners? Because, I mean, is there some other body that can say, look, you know, these increases are?
Yeah, let's, I think Mr. Wilson might.
Bob, could you catch him and maybe get his information? We'll reach out to you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, well, in any case, maybe, you know, average annual income would be a better, a better meter to, to establish rental prices than, than the, than the current real estate situation.
Well, again, we, we don't control that, but Mr. Seal, if you get his information and he, he can reach out to you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, one more. Sorry, didn't mean to overlook you.
Oh, that's all right. Kind of threw together last minute. First thing I'd like to acknowledge, Chief, this is, I'm sorry, Mike Pulisro, National Telecommunications Week, had several opportunities where I would have to call the police department. I want to commend the chief's dispatchers and his officers, the, the way they handle their calls, the way they care about you and everything else, they just should be really recognized for the job they do.
Thank you.
I was looking at your, the P and Z, I don't know, probably none of you remember me, I attended your workshop on land use at Quamellon Park. And one of the things I talked about then is hearing the public and hearing what they have to say. And looking at your flow chart for PUDs, there is nothing, it goes to, it's approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and there is no public hearing before you are elected officials. And I think that's something that needs to be changed because they can make the decisions and then we can't come and be able to talk to you about it. And I know all this development, everything, it's a very hard thing to deal with. But, well, Mr. Kimble, quote him on a recent meeting, he says that their job is to provide a path to approval. Well, what about city codes and what about the residents too? It shouldn't be just that they feel their job is to a path to approval. And, you know, PUDs maybe are a way to look at affordable housing. There's one particular PUD that's coming up, they're, at a sales meeting they had, that's $900,000, they said their starting point. That's not addressing any kind of affordable housing, that's just trying to stuff the pockets in. Another person that's involved, more than two people have said, told about it, it was that people involved in the project, planning to buy it, houses in there to make either vacation rentals or B and Bs out of them. That's not addressing our housing problem whatsoever. And then the, the perception of it, the PUD. One of the engineers involved, one project right outside here, told me that he wanted to come in as part of the annexation and ask for a R1 with a PUD. He was told by somebody in the city, no, just come in and ask for the R1, then come back for the PUD. So then they approved the PUD and we as a public cannot be able to come and address you. And I think that's something that should be changed. We, we, you know, we're trying to solve a housing problems, I realize that, though, that it's a demand for it, but we're only one of about 35,000 cities in this country. And I heard it mentioned at one time, we got like a 4 million housing shortages. Well, if you divide that, that, that's 120 homes per city. We don't have to try and solve the whole thing for everybody. We don't need to turn this into a concrete jungle where you could walk from here to Spokane and never touch dirt. Get the residents involved, Mrs. Thorson, thank you for pointing out when they're talking about this thing, that maybe some people be on it, let residents be on this committee that. that they're putting together, not just people with all the business interests and everything else, the people would like to be heard. Your city website talks over and over again about people involved, citizen involvement. You all in your, some of your things talk about you care about the city, but truly suits your hearts, is that really what we're showing, of people being involved with it. And I had to really kind of laugh about something, it was, he was talking about the PUDs with the dog parks. Where do the kids play? Where, where do kids play? We're building parks for dogs? You look at these PUDs, I did 34 years retired law enforcement, one of my jobs was accident reconstruction, major accident reconstruction. And I'll tell you, I can, I recommend, you don't want to go and see a kid that's been run over by a car because his only place to play was in the streets. I know we, you're trying to balance all this out and I recognize that it's really hard, but at the same token, let's not just throw away what we have. We're also responsible for all the wildlife, the forests, everything around us. Just to throw that away just because we're trying to provide housing for everybody, we don't, we don't have to try and provide it all. So I wish I had it better prepared, I was just kind of put this together, but.
Mr. Wilson, do you want to make comment?
So I just wanted to caution you a little bit. It sounds like Mr. Pelisaro is concerned about a PUD that may be coming before you. I don't believe it's been appealed. Had it been appealed, this would have been sort of outside the bounds because this would be ex parte communication, outside the record of a hearing. I don't believe this has been appealed at this point. So still keep in mind that this type of conversation, this type of testimony really needs to be within the bounds of a public hearing if it's related to a specific project.
Yeah. I'm just related, sir, to all the projects that are going on. I've listened, watched a lot of them, you see getting right and left approved and it's just, it's just in general I'm addressing, I'm not addressing any particular project. It's just, this is what I'm just asking, is that we watch, protect what we've got, let's not just throw it away because of the fact we want to just try and solve something that we don't have to solve ourselves.
Thank you, sir. Next item up is mayor and council comments. I would just say that as the weather has gotten warmer and the kids are out playing more, please do be, I encourage everyone to be cautious, especially when driving, because especially the little ones don't oftentimes make the best decisions out in the streets. So we're going to see more and more of it with an increased sunshine that we're experiencing. So please drive carefully. Council comments.
I guess I just have a question, since we aren't talking about impact fees tonight, but I did want to double check that the information that we got back in October 2019 on the impact fees is the same information that was in our packet this last week? Has it changed?
It has not changed that I'm aware of.
Okay. And we're not going to have another like workshop or anything like that? When this does come back, what we've got in that packet is what we're going to be asked to approve.
Yes, so what you'll be getting at the May 4th council meeting, if I got the date right, will be essentially the update from Tischlerweis that should be the same information that you saw at the workshop last fall. An ordinance that was on tonight as well, is in the packet for tonight, that it's essentially routine housekeeping. We review that every time we bring the impact fees back to you as well as a resolution that's going to establish the, the fee. So you should have the whole packet on May 4th.
Okay, perfect.
Anybody else? We do not need an executive session tonight?
We do not.
Next motion is?
Adjourned.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you.